Good evening and welcome to this evening's Board of Education meeting for Monday, April 24th. I'll call this meeting to order and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise as you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Lavelle, can we please have a roll call?
Yes. Mrs. Castelli.
Here.
Mr. Doring.
Here.
Mrs. Passaretti. Mrs. Raccio.
Here.
Dr. Reed.
Here.
Ms. Regan.
Dr. Roscoe.
Here.
Mr. Ross.
Here.
Mr. Votto.
Here.
Eight members present and voting.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to Student Board Representatives. And I believe you have Leah here with us today? I'm sorry, and then we'll get to you next, Paige. We'll mix it up this month.
I know. I was expecting Paige to go first. So I hope everyone had a nice and relaxing April break and is looking forward to ending this year off on a good note. An upcoming event this week at Sheehan is this Thursday at 6:00 where we will honor the varsity scholars, which are students who have had a 3.9 GPA or higher while at Sheehan. On May 2nd, we will celebrate seniors going to college where they get to wear their college merch for I've Got Plans Day. The week of May 8th to 12th is Teacher Appreciation Week. In order to celebrate our teachers around school, Student Council will be holding a cereal drive. Students will bring cereal to their favorite teacher's class and the teacher with the most cereal at the end will win and be awarded a gift card. The cereal will then be donated to the local master's manor. The junior prom is scheduled for May 13th at the Views of Powder Ridge. In preparation for prom season, Sheehan just hosted Steve Emps, who is a Paralympian, to bring awareness to driving under the influence. This was a moving presentation and we hope it has an impact on the students' decisions. On May 10th, Sheehan's annual art show will be held in Senior Court from 6:00 to 7:30. For seniors unsure of plans after high school, on May 12th, there will be a post-high school fair for seniors at the Hubcap. On May 15th and 16th is the testing for the Certified Nursing Assistant classes at both Sheehan and Lyman Hall. If students pass the exam, there will be a pinning ceremony at Sheehan on May 30th in the auditorium. On May 17th, Sheehan will be holding a spring concert in the auditorium at 7:00. On May 18th, the AP art show will be held at the Hubcap at 6:00. Upcoming, on May 24th, we have senior academic awards and scholarship night. On May 25th, Sheehan will have its college signing ceremony at 2:00, right after school in Senior Court. Sheehan will have its annual poetry slam contest on May 26th during school hours, which is an event that people love to attend during advisory. Sheehan Boys and Girls Lacrosse beat Lyman Hall on the 14th. The girls' score was 6 to 5 and the boys' was 10 to 7. Some other sports records are baseball has four wins and five losses currently. The boys' lacrosse team has five wins and four losses. And the girls' lacrosse team is three ones, four losses. As of tonight, three wins and five losses.
Thank you very much. There's a lot going on, isn't there? I can't believe we're going to be talking about May and graduation and everything next month. So, thank you very much for the update. We appreciate it. Okay, Paige, your turn.
Hi, everyone. I'm here to give some Lyman Hall updates for the upcoming month of May and what happened last April. So for some general updates, the students who wanted to prove their proficiency in a second language were given the opportunity to take the SEAL by literacy test last month. As well, the Unified Sports and Best Buddies programs are hosting the Second Annual Unified Fashion Show in the Lyman Hall auditorium. This is an inclusive event where students can dress up and walk down the runway during the Fun Field Night. The show begins at 6:00 PM and all benefits go to the Best Buddies, Unified Sports, and Unified Theater programs. The senior class is in high gear in terms of activities culminating their four years of experience at Lyman Hall. Last week, seniors witnessed the tragedy of driving while impaired as a mock crash was staged on the school grounds. This event, put on during prom season, is a reminder for students not to drink and drive or drive distracted. In the meantime, the senior class officers and representatives are putting together the final, I'm sorry, the annual senior prom to be held on Friday, May 26th, at the AquaTurf. Other upcoming events include the annual senior outing, graduation, and project graduation. From the College and Career Center, on April 18th, there was a very successful job fair at the Hubcap and over 70 students attended. On May 1st, Lyman Hall will be celebrating senior plans and having activities during lunch waves, as well as a college/military/trade T-shirt day for students and staff. On May 12th, there will be a fair for district seniors who are yet to make plans. The fair's purpose is to connect in graduating students with a post-high school plan in the trades, military, and community colleges. From the School Counseling Department, counselors are continuing to meet with juniors individually to talk about their plans for after high school, and families are invited to attend at these meetings. The 9th grade students are taking the PSAT on Wednesday, April 26th. AP exams start next week. There are 175 exams being administered for students between May 1st and May 12th. And then lastly, I have some A events and activities to share. So from the 1st to the 12th of May, there is AP testing. From the 8th to the 12th, there's Teacher Appreciation Week where we can show our gratitude for our teachers. On the 10th, it is Advisory Day for students. On the 12th of May, there is a junior prom at Il Monticello. Excuse me, on the 18th through 20th of May, Lyman Hall is hosting their musical performance of Into the Woods, and we would like to all see you there. And on the 23rd of May, there is the NGSS assessment. On the 26th, the senior prom will be held, the AquaTurf. And on May 31st, there will be a scholarship night for seniors. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And again, thank you both for coming. I know it's a very busy time of year and you probably don't want to stay for our whole meeting, but the student representative reports are always a highlight for us because we get to really hear about what's happening in the schools and it kind of brings to fruition everything that we're doing. So thank you both and enjoy the month, and we'll see you next month. Thank you. Next, we have public comment and answer. Do we have any public comment tonight? Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. Oh, I'm sorry, presentation and awards. We don't have any this evening. Did I see? I crossed it off so fast. Yes, I did miss that on the agenda, but we don't have any. Moving on to our consent agenda. We do have a board member who removed items 17, I'm sorry, 7.15 and 7.16. So at this time, I will entertain, I will make a motion to approve items 7.1 through 7.14 and 7.17. Can I have a second?
Second.
Having a first and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. The consent agenda is done. Item 8 on the agenda, items removed from the consent agenda. That would be 7.15 and 7.16. Mr. Doring, would you like to speak to these?
Yes, thank you. My concern about these was the same thing that I had addressed during the committee meetings. This is a 12th grade curriculum. However, a lot of the books that were listed were significantly below the 12th grade level. There were several that were at the middle school level and only about a third were at the 12th grade level, and that's my concern with these. That is not appropriate for the grade level of students.
Any other comments?
Well, I would just, not everyone reads at a 12th grade level. And so I do think, I appreciate having the variety, and I understand that we need to encourage our students to push themselves, but I do think we also have to meet them where they can. And so if they have the ability to choose a book that is, you know, it's not on a 12th grade level, I'm okay with that. I would just, if they're reading, I'm happy that they're reading.
Ms. Votto, then Mrs. Castelli.
If she was first.
Was she? I'm sorry.
I don't know.
Look this way.
She wasn't.
Do you want to?
Mr. Daring, you're saying they were on what grade level, do you think?
So it was stated in the document level they were. Every book was at a different level, but there were several that were at the middle school level. There were only a few that were at the 12th grade level.
Okay. I agree with Mrs. Regan. I think sometimes the title of the book might be misleading, and you might think, oh, that book is read in 7th grade normally or 6th grade, but sometimes the book is written, the vocabulary is at that grade level, but the, what's the word I'm trying to use? The theme or whatever is for a higher grade. So therefore, that's the balance, so to speak. The interest level is up here, but the readability might be down here, so therefore, those kids don't feel left out. I just wanted to add that.
Mrs. Castelli?
I just want to concur with Mrs. Regan. I totally agree. We have many of our students that are reading below grade level, and to subject them to reading material only, that they can't possibly do, you know, help, is not in their best interest, I think defeats the purpose, and I think we have to meet kids where they are. Thanks.
Mr. Doring?
Thank you. And I just want to be clear. I am not suggesting that every book should be at the 12th grade level. I know that we have a variety of readers, and I agree that we definitely do need to be meeting students where they are. However, when I'm seeing there are about twice as many not at the 12th grade level as there are that are at the 12th grade level, when I'm seeing some that are many years behind, that's where I start to get concerned.
I'll just add that this is not an AP course. There are courses, other courses for senior English that may appeal to different levels. So I'm okay with this because typically you're not going to have your AP students. If there's room in their schedule, they're going to move to an AP English. So I'm okay with having this option, and I think it speaks to our entire population. And it's not limiting those who may want more rigor in a course that they feel that they can handle. Anybody else? Okay. At this point, I will entertain a motion to approve 7.15 and 7.16.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a first and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Noted, and the motion carries. Thank you. We are now on to correspondence. Madam Secretary, what do you have for us?
Thank you so much, Mrs. Raccio. So first, I just would like to acknowledge this beautiful thank you note that was sent from Christina Sagnella and her family, and it reads, "Thank you so very much for the beautiful flowers that you sent to my dad's wake. It was very thoughtful of you all." So I just wanted to acknowledge that and also remind Mrs. Sagnella that we are thinking about her during this time. We also had some donations. So the first one is a big thank you to Country Flower Farm, Paul and Cheryl Schatzman. They donated seed packets for the Earth Day program for all of our grades pre-K through 5, and the value of this was $3,355. And I can just add a little note that my first grader was very excited to come home with his seed packet, is very excited to watch the germination process. And so I can only imagine that that type of excitement was echoed throughout the whole district, so thank you so much for that. The next thank you is to Chick-fil-A for donation in the amount of $4,000, and it was to the Leader Academy program. And that is in care of Todd Langston, the local Chick-fil-A owner. And another thank you to him as well for a donation of a $650 lunch for the Credit for Life event. And one more is to Neil's Donuts for the breakfast donation for the Credit for Life event, and this was also in the value of $650. And I just want to say thank you to our local businesses who really do support us. I think almost monthly there are thank yous to be given, so we really appreciate that, and it really helps our events run very successfully. So, thank you.
Were there any extra donuts?
Oh, I don't know. No extra donuts, Mr. Votto.
They'd be here.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Roscoe. Moving on to our committee reports. Mr. Ross, do you have anything to tell us about the ACIS?
No, I do not.
Okay. System-wide PTAC update. Mrs. Latour, how are you?
I'm good. How are you? At our latest meeting, as we normally do, we covered the monthly highlights and the superintendent updates. Topics of discussion that evening were the beloved senior walkthroughs that will occur again this year. For the public who may not be aware, our seniors return to our elementary schools to walk through as they leave our district after graduating from Sheehan and Lyman Hall. It is a much-loved event that we are thrilled to go back to. And topics for next year were discussed as potential items for system-wide PTAC to continue to investigate recycling, busing, safety, and substance abuse awareness. Our next meeting is May 16th via Google Meet at 6:00 PM.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Assistant Superintendent Turner, you got some things going on this week. I see signs around town.
We do. Good evening. So last month, the Special Education PTAC sponsored a training or workshop on the connection between ADHD and social anxiety and how to support your children through that. It was a phenomenal webinar. It was very, very good and well-attended. Tomorrow, we have our annual Special Education Family Resource Center. We have sent invitations out to all of the local districts within 45 miles, as well as all of our therapeutic schools within Wallingford, North Haven, Hampden, and Middletown. So we're really, you know, any families that are in the state are welcome to come. We have 38 vendors coming, combination of state agencies, toys, counseling, occupational therapy, physical therapy, social skill training, as well as life planning, attorneys. So it's really quite a gambit of individuals driving, so getting your driving license if you have a disability. So we're really looking forward to tomorrow evening. It's 5 o'clock at Lyman Hall between 5:00 and 7:00. And we ask families to come through the gym entrance, so we'll be back there. So we hope some individuals are able to come.
Thank you. And I just want to recognize that the Special Ed PTAC has really, they've picked this fair up after it didn't run for several years and post-COVID. Now, they had it last year and this year, so kudos to the parents and teachers who have collaboratively made this happen. And it is very much looked upon and looked forward to by other districts, not just the families in our district. So I have no doubt that you will have a flow of people coming through the doors tomorrow, and thank you for your time and effort in that. It really is huge for our community. Next on our agenda, 10.4 Food Service Strategic Planning Committee. Do we have an update? No update today. Okay. 10.5 Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. Dr. Thompson? Nope, you're not on. We'll wait for you.
Thank you, Mrs. Raccio. So we, the District Committee met on April 18th. We've got an incredible cross-section of staff members and students represented on the committee, and we are currently in the works on putting together a PSA, a Public Service Announcement, where we will tell the high school communities what our work is on the District Committee, and we'll be looking for more student voice come the fall. So we wanted to get the word out there before the end of the school year, so we're excited about working on that. And I will be meeting with Lee Farrell and Jane Fisher from the library to talk about how our District Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee can sync with what the town, the work the town's doing, so that we can partner. So we're looking forward to that meeting. We'll be on May 4th.
Fantastic. That's good to hear. Next on the agenda is the CAEB report, and CAEB is actively following legislation. I have no update as to anything that has passed, specifically with the right-to-read changes, so hopefully we may hear soon more of that. That is it for our committee reports this evening. Next, we have old business, and I don't believe we have any. So at this time, item 12 on our agenda is Executive Session. I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
First and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries, and we are now in executive session. Thank you. Good evening and welcome back to this evening's Board of Education meeting. Next on our agenda is the Instructional Committee. And I will turn this over, as he gets ready, to Mr. Votto. And Mrs. Roscoe, will you help him with seconds this evening?
I sure will.
Thank you. Mr. Votto and Ms. Roscoe.
All right, 13.1, we have the approval of a leave of absence. I make a motion that a leave of absence for Alyssa Kresge be approved without pay and in accordance with the provisions of the current teacher's contract for May 23rd, 2023, until the end of the school year. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. 13.2, approval of acceptance of retirements. Motion one. I make a motion that the Board of Education accept the retirement of Kimberly Hardy effective June 30th, 2023. Kimberly Hardy has been an elementary Spanish teacher since November 2017.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. I make a motion that the Board of Education accept the retirement of Dean Delavechia effective June 30th, 2023. Dean Delavechia has been a music teacher since August 2002. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Yes.
Yes, I would just like to wish Dean the best in his retirement. I've had conversations with him, especially when it came to the musical time, and talk about dedication. I mean, this guy went above and beyond, and I really appreciate all he's done, and I'm going to miss you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Third motion, I make a motion that the Board of Education accept the retirement of Kimberly Bloom effective June 30th, 2023. Kimberly Bloom has been a middle school teacher since September 2002.
Second. Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any discussion on the motion? I should have said that first, right?
You already did.
You did.
Motion passes. 13.3, approval of acceptance of resignation. I make a motion that the Board of Education accept the resignation of Tara Hill effective June 30th, 2023. Tara Hill has been a middle school Spanish teacher since September 2014.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, abstention? Motion carries. 13.4, Superintendent's Nonrenewal Recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Votto. In my capacity as Superintendent of Schools, I recommend that the Wallingford Board of Education non-renew the teaching contracts of the named individuals on the attached nonrenewal list effective at the end of the 2022-2023 school year in accordance with the provisions of the Connecticut General Statute Section 10-151, and that the Board of Education authorize me to furnish written notices of action to the provided names of teachers to be non-renewed. You should know that the above-named teachers have been advised that I intend to make this recommendation. If the Board of Education takes action on my recommendation, the teachers have the right, under the Connecticut General Statute, Section 10-151, to request the reason for the Board of Education's action to non-renew their contracts of employment. Further, I also recommend that I be authorized and instructed to communicate notice of this action by the Board to the affected teachers and to respond for the Board to any appropriate requests that may be forthcoming from the teachers or their representatives as provided in the teacher tenure law.
Thank you. At this point, we'll make a motion on that. I make a motion that pursuant to Connecticut General Statute Section 10-151, the Wallingford Board of Education non-renew the teaching contracts of the named individuals on the nonrenewal list at the end of 2022-2023 school year as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools. I further move that the Superintendent of Schools be directed to communicate this action of the Board in writing to the affected teachers, and that the Superintendent be authorized to respond on behalf of the Board to any request for a hearing, if required by law, or for other information which may be forthcoming from the teachers or pursuant to applicable provisions of the Connecticut General Statute Section 10-151, and that the Superintendent be directed that any response for a hearing, if the hearing is required by law, indicate that such hearing is to be before the Board of Education. The teachers named on the list are recommended by the Superintendent of Schools for nonrenewal by the Wallingford Board of Education pursuant to Connecticut General Statute Section 10-151 effective at the end of the 2022-2023 school year.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. And I think that's it.
No, you have one more very important thing that all the seniors in town are waiting for us to do. 13.6.
Oh, it's not written anywhere.
Do you want my agenda?
All right, we need, I have a motion on the, I guess a motion to make, the approval of the High School Graduation Day and the Last Day of School as Thursday, June 15th, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Last day of school will be June 15th.
And with that, I think that's all for the Instructional Committee meeting. Thank you very much, and I'm sure that the seniors and the folks in charge of Project Graduation are very happy to have that date set, and they will proceed with all of their planning. Next on our agenda is Operations Committee, item 14, and I will turn that over to Ms. Regan and Mrs. Castelli.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and just read from the minutes, and if I forget anything, Ms. Castelli, she can remind me since I was not present at that, so I'm just going to go off the minutes, but I know that it was a very abbreviated meeting, so. The meeting was on April 17th, and the first order of business was from Mr. Barone, and he had a projected surplus for the month of $934,000, which was an increase of $69,000 from the previous month, and the main reason of that was, for that increase was salaries, benefits, and excess cost reimbursement. He also did make a request, a transfer request for the Pond Hill and Highland Gym floors. There was some discussion around this and that the decision was made not to do a transfer, but instead to use unencumbered funds. And then there was some, there was discussion about the budget, which we know that the mayor's number was less than what we had requested, and that is an ongoing process. Then they moved into the Cafeteria Financial Reports, and Mr. Bondi reported that the monthly surplus of 100, there was a monthly surplus of $186,841, and that gives us a year-to-date surplus of $535,945. He also presented the State Smart Funds Refund Tracking Worksheet, and for the month of March, the state reimbursed $203,831.76. He also reviewed the Lunch and Breakfast Participation Reports. And then we went into Maintenance and Facilities, and Mr. Deptula reviewed some items on the project summary, going through what had been completed. Some of the items that were reviewed were the fuel tank for the warehouse, the basketball shot clocks, and the parking lot lighting, and the softball field at Lyman Hall. And then the job description for the Assistant to Supervisor of Building and Grounds was presented by Dr. Thompson, and then there were no questions about that job description, and the meeting was adjourned at 7:07.
Excellent. Thank you both. Oh, Mrs. Castelli, sorry.
Yeah, I just want to add that the Lyman Hall softball field is just for the design. It's not, yes.
Thank you for that clarification. And that will wrap it up for the Operations Committee. Moving over to Administration, Superintendent Belizzi.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to recap some of the things that went on last week, particularly last Wednesday when we presented the budget to Town Council. So just to give a recap, we did present what our proposed budget was and also what the mayor has recommended, which we had asked, just to clarify, we had asked for a sustained budget of $5.5 budget of 5.53%, and a strategic budget of 0.691%, which gives us an overall request, or budget increase request of 6.223. As we discussed last Wednesday night, the mayor's recommendation is less than what our sustained is, so at this point, we'll wait to see what happens on May 2nd in terms of the Town Council motions, and we should know more by May 9th, and then we will all gather again and get together and look at how we are going to move forward with the funding that has been allocated to us. Now that we have also established our graduation date, I know our administrators at both of the high schools are going to be anxious, as Mrs. Latour said earlier, to set up the tours for our students and to get ready for graduation, so we're looking forward to that. We're looking forward to all of our end-of-year events as well. So it's going to be a nice next two months, busy, but very good. So I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Latour for updates.
Good evening, everyone. I have just a few quick items. As a general reminder, we have started our Connecticut summative testing, so the Smarter Balance Assessment is occurring at our 3 through 8 grade levels. Our buildings have created schedules while not exactly lockstep between the buildings, they're all around the same time. We started before the break with mathematics and are currently in English language arts currently. They should be wrapping up in the next week or two. And then the NGSS, which is the science assessment, that is given in grades 5, 8, and 11. Our middle school and elementary school has completed that as well, and as you heard from the high school reports, they will be doing that in a few weeks. SAT day was in the end of March, and our students have the results back in College Board, and our administrators also have the results back and are already analyzing how our students have grown since the fall administration of the PSAT, so they're already at work looking at student successes. We will share those with the Board, obviously, when we're allowed to, when the state gives us the okay. Registration continues to proceed for next year. We have quite a few kindergartners already signed up for the 23-24 school year. Our school buildings are anxiously planning our first in-person kindergarten orientation since, believe it or not, the spring of 2019, so that is very exciting for our buildings. We will invite our families and our new kindergarten students to the building. They will get tours. Our parents will get an informative presentation about what a day in the life of a kindergarten, kindergartner looks like in Wallingford Public Schools. So everyone will have information mailed home to them the beginning of May to prepare for that. And then finally, just a board update. Again, good news. We had two international trips that finally got to go to Iceland and to Spain. Again, carryovers from the spring of 2020 when they were canceled, but they did finally go, and the kids and the staff had an amazing time, and I can't thank the staff members and our chaperones enough for bringing our students along on these for many once-in-a-lifetime trips. The pictures that I've seen were amazing, and I know everyone had a great time. I also want to thank our music department at the high school. They brought the high school band and chorus and strings to Disney right before the break as well. These trips are incredibly valuable for our students, but they're also very time-consuming to plan, and it takes a tremendous amount of thoughtful planning and dedication from our staff members, so just a big shout-out to them for taking the time and the responsibility of bringing our students out of state or out of the country. It's been a real worthwhile experience for all of our students to participate in. And Mrs. Turner does not have a report tonight, so we can move on from there.
Thank you very much, and it's just such a pleasure to hear about kindergarten orientation. The buildup to kindergarten kind of parallels Christmas morning of just being excited in your first time in a school, and to be able to do that back in person again is very exciting for our students and families. Moving on to announcements, item 16 on our agenda. On Monday, May 1st, the Instructional Committee meeting will meet via Google Meet at 6:00 PM. On Wednesday, May 3rd, we will have a special Board of Education meeting at 5:00 in the Board of Education Conference Room. On Monday, May 8th, we will have a Operations Committee meeting, also on Google Meet, at 6:00 PM. On Monday, May 22nd, the Board of Education will meet here for its regularly-scheduled monthly meeting in the Robert F. Prese Town Council Chambers at 6:30. I see no hands for any other additional business to come before the Board this evening, so I will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you, and have a good evening.